Good evening. The Planning Commission meeting of April 7, 2021 is called to order. Due to COVID-19, novel coronavirus and health recommendation from the LA County Health Department, the Planning Commission meeting is being conducted public virtually with no members of the public present. The public is encouraged to watch and participate from the safety of their own homes to practice social distancing. The meeting can be viewed on local cable TV and is being streamlined online at the city's website at www.glandauca.gov. For public comments and questions during the meeting, please call 818-937-8100. City staff will be submitting the questions and comments in real time to appropriate person. Current planning commission agenda are available by visiting our website at www.glandauca.gov. And we have a roll call, please.
Yes, Commissioner Trachin?
Here.
Commissioner Fuentes?
Here.
Commissioner Lee?
Here.
Commissioner Shabazian? I see a raised hand. And Chairperson Manassian?
Here.
Sorry, I couldn't unmute. I am here for those on a call.
Excellent, next? Next is reports regarding posting of the agenda. The agenda for the April 7, 2021 regular meeting of the Glendale Planning Commission was posted on March 31, 2021 on the bulletin board outside City Hall. And next, we can go on to approval of the minutes.
I think the chairperson is muted.
Yeah, I know. I unmuted myself. Yes, can we have a roll call, please?
Let's entertain a motion for the minutes.
I'll motion.
I second it.
Second that. I'll second that.
Okay, then we're good to go for that?
Yes.
Accepting that objection.
There's no objections?
So the minute stand approved as submitted.
So Kristen, next stage.
Yeah, number four?
Do we have any board commission members? Do we have any comments?
I think you have oral communications first, number four. I apologize.
Oral communication?
I have, I see no phone calls at the moment, so I don't see any oral communications.
So we can move on to the next one. Board commission members' comments. Do we have any comments?
I see mostly shakings of heads. No?
One. So review calendar. Have to go through the agenda for tonight?
Correct, so now we can move on to the agenda. There's no old business, so the next, the next item, number seven, will be new business if you'd like to introduce.
Okay, let me open my... All right, the tonight's agenda is a notice of planning commission public hearing statutory development agreement case number PDA 2014726. Location is 120 West Colorado Street. The applicant is Vista Investment LLC. Zone is DSP TV Downtown Specific Time Zone Transitional District. Legal description is Lot 21, Lomita Park, Track Lot 32, Track Number 2382. Project description: On May 22, 2018, the city council approved PDR 1721930 for six-story hotel with 130 guest rooms with one level of subterranean parking. In addition, the city council approved PVAR 1721927 to allow 38% of the required parking spaces to be in tandem and/or vertically stacked arrangement, exceeding the code maximum of 25%. Both approvals were set to expire on May 22, 2020. Two years from the approval date, per GMC Section 30.41.015A, a one-year time extension was granted extending the approval to May 22, 2021. Development agreement. Development agreement is being proposed between the City of Glendale and Vista Investment LLC, a California liability company for the project pursuant to Government Code Section 65864 through 65869.5. The proposed development agreement provides a six-year entitlement period for the project. Locks in 2018, city development impact fee structure, impact and linkage fees exactions or fair share charges imposed by the city on the new development.
I apologize, Chairperson. I was, I was wondering if maybe we could have the staff do the presentation if that would be okay? Just proposing that.
Staff can do it. It would be much better for me to do it.
I was, I thought you were reading the full project description, so I was gonna let you finish. But I would be happy to summarize moving forward if that's good.
First time, I'm a little bit nervous, so.
Yeah, Kristen, also, can I request Chair Manassian to up his volume? It's a little bit low from my end. I'm not sure if I'm the only one, but I can hardly hear him.
Okay.
Does anybody else have any problem? Because...
You're, you're a little, you're a little soft.
Low, low, yeah.
So maybe I can come closer to the microphone, maybe that way.
And...
Thank you.
And project your voice maybe when we get to it, so, okay.
Thanks, Chairperson.
Okay, so I am going to start sharing my screen and walk you through an outline of tonight's item. Can I get a shake of heads? Can everybody see this? Excellent. Thumbs up works too. As mentioned, tonight's item is a statutory development agreement for the AC Hotel Project. It's located at 120 West Colorado Street. I will very briefly go over the project history, overview of the development agreement, and then we'll open for questions. As I mentioned, this is 120 West Colorado Street. It is currently the Vagabond Inn. It is located across the street to the south of the Nordstrom Building at the Americana. In, back in 2018, May of 2018, the city council approved a hotel project at this site. Six stories, 130 rooms, with one level of subterranean parking. As mentioned, this, this entitlement is set to expire May 22 of this year. This is just some renderings of the approved project. And tonight's discussion is about a development agreement, and the proposal is for six years. And as a development agreement, it's asking to vest the, which sort of freezes in time, the, the standards, the development standards for the downtown specific plan from the time of approval, so in 2018, as well as the city development impact fee structure. Pardon me, I skipped that. The reason for the request, and I know the applicant is on the line as well and may be able to speak more if there's any questions, but it's obviously in response to the COVID-19 economic crisis that we're in. And this is to allow for some more time for the, to allow the current economic conditions to improve as well as recovery in the area of travel and tourism. And also to give enough time for project financing, construction documents, permit process, plan check, construction, all of those things. It is staff's recommendation that the planning commission find that the development agreement is consistent with the general plan and the downtown specific plan and recommend approval of this agreement to the city council. That is a very brief overview of what we're discussing tonight, and we'll entertain any questions for staff.
Mr. Chair, if I might just add at this, at this time, Chair Manassian, I would recommend in reading the motion that it include not just a consistency finding with the general plan, but also with the applicable specific plan, which as you just stated, is a downtown specific plan. So that analysis was completed, and that should be included in the, in the motion that would be approved by the planning commission. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. I, I think you might have not been able to see from the staff, Chairperson, if that's okay. So Kristen, you mentioned that we are, the development agreement, it basically freezes it for six years for any changes that will have. Have there been any changes from the time that this has been submitted? Or are we anticipating future changes, and we're trying to freeze it for any future changes that might come?
So the, the two-part question, I, I, you know, zoning is never frozen, so one never knows. But in 2019, there was a change to the downtown specific plan, really related to some design improvements and areas in the public realm. So the downtown specific plan has already been amended and altered a little bit from this 2018 proposal. It was just after.
I am just wondering if the applicant were to update to meet the 2019 changes, would that be a significant change? And when it comes to the fee structure, what changes does that intake?
I don't know if the applicant is prepared to answer that question.
Can I go ahead?
Please.
Hi, I'm Amanda. I'm the in-house architect who worked on the project for Vista Investments. And we looked briefly at it. I haven't done an in-depth study. The only thing I think that would affect the design is you have incorporated some kind of tiered setbacks along the facade on Colorado. So we would, we would have sort of a wedding cake effect on the facade that would change, that would change the way the building looks, obviously change the way the square footage is laid out. I think we could probably achieve similar square footage if we had to redesign it. But it would, it would, it would make a significant change on the look from the facade. It would make it, quite honestly, a little out of sync with the other buildings that it would be next to. And it would also, I believe there's a parking change in the parking requirement. So actually, the parking would be, there would be less parking required now if we were to redo it than when we submitted our project.
Since you are answering questions, may I continue? Okay, so my question would be, if you were to redesign this, how, how much is this going to impact your current schedule on basically finalizing and then construction of the project?
You know, currently, we're asking for up to six years of extension given COVID. So we had... We would have to backtrack and redesign a bit. I imagine we wouldn't start that right away, given that we're, we're just kind of suffering a lot of challenges since people really aren't traveling yet. It wouldn't be financially, it's just not a focus for us right, right this moment. So I'd say we would probably wait a year or two, depending on how the market bounces back, see how the construction pricing similarly is out of control at the moment. And then take a look at the project again if we had to redesign it. So I'd, I'd say that would push us to the full six years, whereas if we didn't have to do that, we might be able to do it a little quicker.
Thank you.
I have a few questions for the applicant as well. I'm a little bit curious as to the background of the project. Can you kind of walk us through what happened between 2018 and 2020 prior to COVID? Why weren't permits pulled in that two-year span, and why was an extension needed in the first place?
Sure, so we, we started working right away on permits for that project back in 2018 when it was approved. And we had permitted this as a modular build, so we were trying to do something pretty innovative. It's a new technique in the hospitality market is to do this modular construction. And at the time, there was only really two companies that were doing it, and they were both doing it in wood. One of those companies proceeded to almost go bankrupt, but not quite, and they are actually still now back in business. But they, they were really struggling. And so we ran into some issues with just the technology that we had committed to in our entitlements, and it would slow this down a lot, also trying to find a local contractor to do the lower portion of the building. So there's two, there'd be the underground and then the first story of the building are type one concrete construction that you would then stack on top of. And finding a local contractor that was willing to do it, to try something new, was just proving to be more challenging than we expected. So we finally actually had that person lined up and were ready to start design. Our plan was to start design, or I shouldn't say that. We, we were ready to submit for permitting when we started to run into this issue with the manufacturer. So that must have been in, I'd say, early, mid, mid 2019. We had actually worked out and found a contractor and were restarting design work right when COVID hit. So we had planned to try and submit for permits in July of last year, based on having this contractor on board and finally a manufacturer. Because you have to, the way the modular works, you have to design in tandem with an actual manufacturer. You can't just design as you normally would and then bid the project. It's a little bit more, you kind of have to get married right up front. So that's why we got slowed down. But we were actually trying really hard to hit our 2020, our May 22 deadline prior to COVID, and then COVID just, everything kind of went out the window.
Thank you for that. So a few follow-up questions. I guess the first being, let's say that this is approved today. What's your schedule looking like in terms of pulling permits? I know you mentioned some potential design alterations, but what can we expect in terms of timeline to actually getting this thing started? And secondly, have you started the process of looking for financing options? Have you found any difficulties there? Because I know lenders are, you know, scaling back quite a bit since last year on lending on hospitality. So that's potentially a concern, and they've, they've also been putting in more restrictions on construction lending. So kind of the two coupled together make it a bit difficult, as I'm sure you know. So I'm kind of curious what, like what the plan is moving forward and what we can expect in terms of timeline.
Sure, yeah, so construction financing is a really big issue right now. It's non-available for hotels. We've been told by lenders, maybe the end of the year might be a possibility, but it's really hard to know. Similar issues, you know, construction pricing is, is really scary right now. It's really, really high. I think everybody thought after COVID it would go down, and it's actually doing the opposite due to lumber pricing and a bunch of other issues. So I would say we probably would wait until maybe next year to even start really looking at this again to see when, when construction financing is available, because we have to, we use some of that financing also to pay for the permit process, which is, is pretty expensive, even the upfront permit fees. And then similar issues with the way that modular works. We actually have to pay the modular company prior to submitting permits, so that complicates financing a little bit. So I think this type of project is gonna, it's gonna drag in the things that lenders are willing to do. It's gonna be later than maybe the average hotel going up. The location is great, so that's, that's attractive. And I think, you know, for us, the real push is we want this done by the Olympics, obviously, well before. So say 2028, we'd want it done with, with quite a bit of time to get the hotel up and running and really functioning well. Maybe that's 2026. But also, business travels, just strange right now. No one's, no one's flying. This is a very business-driven hotel. We also had quite a bit of conferencing space, you know, with COVID, that feels like, it's a nervous thing. So I think if we wanted to really build what we had planned to build, we'd want to wait a couple of years and see, maybe two, to see how things shake out. If things start to get back to normal, then I think we'd want to get started. But we could get through permitting, I'd say, and we have to kind of, Mark maybe could comment on this, but in about nine months with the modular, it takes a lot of pressure off the city actually to do modular construction. Most of permitting goes to a third party.
So I just have one more remark before passing it on to my fellow commissioners. I think, you know, some of my concerns are twofold based on what you're saying. In one sense, you know, I understand the concern, and there's been delays already, and it looks like, you know, there's more waiting in the future. At the same time, six years is a long time to ask for a project this small, especially locking in fees from 2018, as well as some of the other things that are being requested. So it's kind of like two opposites going at each other, which is something I'm a bit concerned about. But I'll let other commissioners opine on it first, and then we can discuss it later.
And I will just point out, we do have some callers waiting. So if, when we're ready to open the public hearing, we can go to them, but I, I see some hands still.
I have a very quick question. When did this go to design review board? I'm assuming prior to the downtown specific plan being adopted.
This was, this was reviewed, this design review was reviewed by the city council under the downtown specific plan that was in place prior to 2019.
Yes, that's okay, perfect. So prior to 2018, I mean, 2019, when we adopted the downtown specific plan. Okay, thank you.
We adopted some amendments to the downtown specific plan. Downtown specific plan's been around since 2006.
Correct, thank you.
Any other questions, commissioners? Okay. Go ahead.
Well, I shared the same concern of Commissioner Stephen. I was gonna ask the same question, like, since 2018, they have done anything as far as moving towards building permit processing and all that? So it looks like they have not done anything on that aspect. Also, I was trying to find out if we are to apply, what are the code changes have happened since 2018? And if we are to apply some of those code changes, what are the major impacts on this project? I can see someone. So those are my, my concern.
I think, go ahead, Mark.
You know, I think it needs to be pointed out that this project is exempt from any changes to the DSP that were adopted in 2019. The ordinance the council adopted, Section 14 specifically exempted projects that were entitled or permitted prior to the changes of the DSP. So this project would not have to be updated to meet the 2019 standards.
Mark, can you elaborate on that a bit more, please? What are the, if you can talk a bit more about that, I'll appreciate it.
Sure, the, when the, when the DSP was amended in 2019, the, the ordinance specifically exempted projects that had, that had received entitlements under the existing DSP. So this project being approved in May 2018, it did not have to be updated or comply with the kind of design standards that were, that were revised as part of the 2019 update.
And there was no time limit that was put on that? It was just, you know, no restrictions that was put on that?
As, as long as the project entitlements are valid, or valid, or their permits valid, they would remain exempt.
Okay, thank you.
And should the project not be recommended for approval, then they're gonna have to make major changes because of the expiration?
No, the development agreement is asking for those 2018 approvals to be, to be locked, to be frozen, and to be continued for the term of the development agreement.
That's exactly what I'm saying. If it does not receive approval, then they're gonna have to go with all the changes that happen.
If this development agreement is, is not approved, there are entitlements would expire on May 22, and they'd have to re-entitle the project starting from scratch.
Okay, thank you.
And I can defer to the applicant if that's an undertaking they'd want to do.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I might also add, the development agreement does not exempt the project from the application of uniform codes. So to the extent that uniform codes, building and safety, fire, et cetera, have been amended or changed during this period of time, the project would be applicable to those current codes. the project would be applicable to those current codes.
And I would just, we do have a couple of callers that are, that are waiting on the line. So if, if we want to open the public hearing and go to those calls, I, I.
Let's go ahead and open the hearing.
Okay. And I'm gonna start with the callers. Good evening, Isabel. You're on live with the planning commission. If you can mute your TV, that would help you hear us.
Okay, hold on. Hello?
Hello, you're, you're on live with the planning commission.
Okay, hi, my name is Isabel. I just calling you and regardless to this project has been approved since 2018 and now they trying to extend and extend and extend. But my concern is about housing. Please, commissioners, you are in charge, you are having these decisions in your hands. I'm asking you, please, no more hotels in Glendale. It need to be more housing project. We can use that land. I remember when we were, I was listening to city, city meetings, the council member meetings. They always speak that they cannot find a place to build those low income houses or limited income hous- houses. Please, no more hotels, no more traffic around Americana, already is a nightmare. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm gonna go to the next caller. Good evening, you're on live with the planning commission. If you can mute your TV, that would help you hear us. Hello, you're on live with the planning commission? Okay, I'm not hearing anything. I'm going to drop and hopefully they can maybe call back. Next, Julio, you're on live with the planning commission? Hello, Julio? Okay, first time was a charm, we'll keep go, keep doing this. Hopefully Julio, if you, if you're, if you're hearing this, you can call back. Good evening, is this Carly? You're on live with the planning commission? If you're, if you can mute, you could hear us better?
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, we can, thank you. You're on live with the planning commission.
Thank you. Before I give my comment, I just want to let you all know that the phone lines were down at the beginning of the meeting and it was pretty challenging to get in for public comment. So anyway, I just want folks to be aware of that. My name is Carly Kirshen, I'm with Unite Here Local 11. We urge you to reject the proposed development agreement, which yet again extends the development timeline and zoning concessions for the proposed 130 room AC hotel. Even prior to the COVID-19 pandemic, despite Glendale's development boom, the applicant's 2018 approvals expired in 2020 and received a one year extension to 2021. Now the applicant is seeking yet another extension of these zoning concessions at a time when the travel market, particularly the future of business travel, is uncertain. And while Glendale and our region's needs for housing is pressing and obvious, how will this granting, how will granting this special privilege aid Glendale in fulfilling its goals under the housing element, like making Glendale, quote, "a city with a wide range of housing types to meet the needs of our current and future residents," unquote, and quote, "a city with increased opportunities for affordable housing," unquote? Or aid in meeting its very aggressive state target for building housing, including affordable housing, in the next eight years? The applicant is free to reapply and follow the standards required of every other hotel in Glendale being proposed today. Furthermore, several elements of the downtown specific plan are currently under review by direction of city council, including whether or not the hotel incentive currently available and used in this project is justifiable in light of the turmoil in the travel industry. Additionally, several council members have expressed concern with tandem parking, another element of the proposed project, among other timely changes such as stronger environmental standards and better requirements around mobility improvement. The applicant has already had a chance to build the project it presented to the city in a very different time. It should not be given the privilege to avoid new laws. Our elected leaders are considering to address some of the biggest challenges of our time, the interrelated housing and climate crises. Please, commissioners, we respectfully urge you to reject this development agreement. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I still have three callers, I'm gonna keep, keep taking those. Good evening, Pamela, you're on live with the planning commission. Can you hear me? Pamela?
Yes, can you hear?
Yes, we can, go ahead, you're on live with the planning commission.
Hi, good afternoon, yes, Pamela, I am a resident here in Glendale and I'm calling today in support of all the demands that Unite Here members have already expressed. You know, as a resident of Glendale and also a person that does a lot of outreach and education regarding tenant protections and tenant rights, not just in Glendale, but also as part of the stay housed valley county program. I see a dire and hear daily, a dire need for deeply affordable housing, for keeping people housed in their homes. And I cannot believe that special privileges to a hotel here in Glendale is being considered. We don't need another hotel. We don't need a place where people can come and be there for just, you know, for one day. But also, you know, that doesn't bring us closer to meeting our RENA numbers as a region. We need more housing, especially for people that are already falling through the cracks and becoming houseless. So I urge you again to listen to the callers of Unite Here. I am here in solidarity with them. What we need is more housing and privileges like today should not be considered by the commissioner. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, I'm going to Therese. Hi, Therese, you're on live with the planning commission, can you hear us?
Puedo hablar español?
Uh, no.
Oh, I, I'm speaking the southern Spanish. I work in the, in the Hilton Hotel.
Would you like to make just a brief comment?
Yeah, for, for no, no project, and number seven. No projects for more hotels, more events for, for my partner and, and me. I don't speak so much English.
Do I understand you're not in support of the project?
No, it's for, for, for no more, no more standards for privilege in special hotels in the, in hotel for my partner, partner is working in the hotel Hilton.
Okay, I apologize.
I'm sorry, it's, it's, it's not too much English, it's only Spanish.
If, if you're, if you have access to email, you could, you could, you could email us your, your thoughts.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And next, and at the moment, last caller is Julio. Hi, good evening, Julio, you're on live with the planning commission, can you hear us?
Yeah.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, my name is Julio Lopez. I am working in the Glendale Hilton Hotel. Please do not extend the, the special privacy, uh, grade and the AC hotel. My coworker, we not working right now and me too, because I wanna lay off. So please do not extend them to the, especially to the AC hotel. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Julio. Okay, so that summarizes the phone calls I have at the moment. But I'll turn it back to the public hearing and the chair for other questions. And maybe give it a minute if any other calls come in and then we can move forward.
I think it's a good idea to wait a couple of minutes because the lady was saying that the phones are having a problem. So let's see if we can get some phone calls. In the meantime, you have any questions from the commissioners?
I, I have a question. Right before we run into public comments, Mark mentioned that if we were to deny, I'm sorry, was it Mike or Gillian? Mentioned that if we were to deny today's agreement, then the applicant will have to basically start the process from the beginning. And, you know, the city is not actually sure if they are planning to take this or go forward with it. I'm just curious to know if there is an answer that the applicant can give us while we're waiting. If, and the question is if this were to be denied, what are, what are the plans? I see Mark is raising his hand, maybe, maybe I should let him.
I think I need to, I need to clarify my comment and maybe Gillian can jump in. The, the planning commission is making a recommendation to the city council. So if the city council were to not approve the development agreement, the entitlements would expire on May 22 of this year. That means if the, the applicant is interested in pursuing a AC hotel on the site, which I'd like to remind everybody, is already developed with the hotel. There's a 52 room vagabond hotel built in 1971 on the site. So this isn't a choice between housing or some other use. This is a choice between a vagabond hotel or a brand new AC hotel. To be honest, a higher quality hotel. But if the, if the council were to reject the request, the applicant would have to re-entitle the project. And again, I'll defer to the applicant of what their intentions would be if, if that were to happen.
Mr. Chair, if I, and members of the planning commission, if I could add to that as well, that would, in order for the project site to be utilized as housing, that would require a zoning change. I would just mention that as from a practical standpoint. But I also wanted to remind the commission that for purposes of an application for a development agreement, it is, as was mentioned, a recommendation to the city council to approve it by ordinance, since it is a legislative act. And the function of the planning commission with regard to the review of the, of the development agreement is to determine whether or not it is consistent with the general plan and the applicable's specific plan. And so because of what Mark mentioned, this was a carve out within the DSP update. So it's essentially, you could call it a pipeline project. And so from that perspective, it is consistent with the applicable's specific plan. And the analysis is within the stack report concerning the consistency with the general plan. But that is the role of the planning commission tonight with respect to the development agreement application.
I have a quick question. You mentioned that you can defer the application process if the, if we deny it tonight. What do you mean by deferring? I didn't get that part.
I, I'm sorry, I was saying deferring to the applicant of what their intentions would be if, if the council were to reject the development agreement. And then the project would expire, the entitlements would expire. They would have to start the process from the beginning. That's a long, it's to, it's a lengthy undertaking, it takes time. And, and so I would, again, to their future plans, I'll defer to them.
And Chairperson, I would appreciate it if maybe we can hear from the applicant. And I know that Commissioner Trachian has a question. So whichever way you, you prefer to go.
And I will just point out, we do have another caller in, but maybe we can finish this round of questions and then go to the caller.
Amanda, you got something to say?
I was wondering if, do you want me to wait for the, the next question? There's, there was another question and then answer them all at once or whatever you guys prefer me to do.
I'm, I'm just curious to know what, if the city council were to reject this, what would the, what would be your, or the applicant's next, next steps?
Sure, yeah, so, you know, we do own the vagabond in, on the property that's been there for 50 plus years. It's a honestly great property for us, makes, makes great money, is, is great to operate. And there's really no competition locally for that, that level of hotel. We thought that, we also own the Hampton and Suites next door and that was a great experience for us and has done really well, given, excusing the last year, which is what prompted us to go ahead and think about what the next step with that piece of property would look like. But, you know, to be perfectly honest, it's, it is very expensive to entitle a project. It takes a ton of time. If we have to start from scratch, it's not a priority for us. So I think the vagabond would probably be there for quite some time while we think about what the next steps are. I think, you know, extending the entitlements prompts us to, to actually push and do that. But I think if that doesn't, if that doesn't make sense, it doesn't happen, we, we probably will just hang out with the vagabond for quite a while.
Thank you.
Commissioner Trachian?
I have a follow up question based on what Gillian said earlier. So I understand part of our purview is just to say whether this aligns with the general plan and the specific plan and whether, and if that's the case. My question is, if we were to recommend, if we were to say this aligns with the general plan, however, we would like the following revisions or we have the following comments to city council, how would that be structured? Because it's two different things. I understand from, from legal perspective, it's not our purview to comment on, you know, the specific details of the plan. We just have to see if it aligns with what is in the code. But I'm more so curious, how would that be structured? Would it just be an approval with then additional comments to city council or how would that work?
And Kristin can chime in as well, because this, of course, this request, of course, has been considered many times in the past. So the consistency can, finding can be made by motion, but the motion can be amended to include commissioner comments, which Kristin is very good at capturing and would be read into the record as part of a revised motion. We've already got one revision and that has to do with the consistency with the applicable general plan, which she's captured. And so that's what would be brought forward. Kristin, did you want to add?
Yes, you know, any comments by the commission would be added to, you know, as agreed upon by the commission. Comments would then be forwarded for review by the city council.
Any other questions? I guess we have a caller waiting for us.
We do have a caller, so I'm gonna go back to the, back to the airwaves. This feels like a disc jockey radio show with, with, with TV. Okay.
Yes?
Good evening, Carolyn, you're on live with the planning commission, can you hear us?
Yes, who is this? Christine?
You're on, you're on live with the planning commission, so please go ahead with your comments.
Okay, hi, hi, my name is Carolina, I live in Glendale for thirty, over thirty years. And I just want to, I just want to make a, a comment. It's about, it's about the meeting that you are going on right now. I'm, I'm sorry that the project didn't work it out, it's for some reason. And then I, I heard that Christine say that this was a hotel already. So I'm not sure if it was a hotel previously, it's nothing, it's not a very new project. So do you know that now at this pandemic, a lot of people are using hotel rooms with vouchers for a specific program that try to save people to leave on the street because they cannot afford a rent, the highest price rent at this moment in this city? So I guess it's better for them not to start anything and leave it as is. For some reason didn't happen, Ms. Amanda, sorry. For some reason, didn't happen. Miss Amanda, sorry, I don't know if you are Glendalean or you are from California, but you look very upset with the situation. But don't push too hard. For some reason, didn't happen. Just drop off, please. It's gonna benefit us that we don't want more traffic in Colorado. It's already so bad. We make every single mistake in Colorado because of the heavy traffic. We are getting ticket two, three blocks away because they have camera. They are controlling us by camera. So for people that we live over here for many years, it's very sad to see that, that we need to pay the prices when the people in the council member on the on the commission, they make mistakes when they don't really know what is going on outside on the street with the citizens. Number two, yesterday was a meeting where Antonio Portantino, our senator, he say that many of the shopping centers will will be converted into housing. So please, if you can uh measure what he was saying yesterday in the meeting, that means that it's more important housing now than ever before. Please stop this project. Thank you so much.
Okay, that concludes the calls I have at this time.
Are we open to deliberate?
Chairman, if it's if the public comment portion of the meeting is over, you may want to close the public hearing and open it up for deliberations.
Let's close. Go ahead and close the public hearing, please. So uh, our fellow commissioners, do we have any other questions or we can start deliberating?
Um, I don't have any questions, but I just wanted to kind of tell you what I feel about this and how I felt about it since we started talking about it. And I think um, Commissioner Trachian kind of echoed exactly what I was trying to say. Um, the issue here for me is not us having a uh, a hotel or updating the current hotel. But uh, and then I completely understand that we are basically going to be giving a recommendation to council on if this is something that is concurrent with our general plan. My only concern with this is we do have a new downtown specific plan. And I understand that Mark mentioned that there was a um, there was a section that was put in for developments to be able to kind of carry over what they, if they had, if they had applied for um, for a project prior to to the date that we approved the downtown specific project to kind of have that regulation to kind of move over. But this project is kind of gonna be taking a bit long and maybe six years from now, which from twenty-eight to six years from now is going to be even actually eight years, eight, nine years. Um, my recommendation would be for us to approve this uh agreement. However, um, have our council kind of try to not give any special, special requirement or any 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 special treatments to the project and allow the project to be developed as it would be in downtown specific plan. We should, the the specific plan was there, was put in there and then the amendment was put in there to eventually short, medium, and long range to have the downtown look a specific way. And we, this, this is a great opportunity to start kind of uh applying that. Um, so that is kind of my two cents on it. And and I completely understand what the callers are are saying. But yes, it's, that is a completely different um taking that would take if we were to do a zone change and everything. We are here voting on something completely different and that is out of our hand. But my, what I would like to say is for us to be able to talk or or recommend our council for this project to follow our downtown specific plan regulations. That's what I would like to see.
Um, I also have a, I'm sorry, um, I also have a clarification I want to make. Um, you mentioned something that on the two thousand nineteen D S P changes that we had. Uh, your project also is going to be some minor changes according to two thousand nineteen D S P updates. Is that, did I understand right? Amanda?
It, I I'm not, I'm not sure about that. No, I, we wouldn't, we would, I don't believe we would change anything um, from the design perspective. The only thing that, maybe Mark can speak to that a little bit more clearly. And I, when I had reviewed the comments, there were some new or the new downtown specific plan, there were some new setback um, requirements that might affect the front facade a little bit. It wasn't, actually wasn't very substantial. Um, and and you know, something to keep in mind, just I'm an architect about that, is the two buildings on either side of us comply with the previous downtown specific plan and design rules. And they're, you know, not coming down anytime soon. It's a condo building and a hotel that we own and we're a long-term holder. So I I do actually think that having it comply with at least that particular facade change, it's gonna be a kind of a lone building and an entire strip of buildings that that matches that. So it's, it's actually a little bit strange because it won't, you know, that street's not going to change. Maybe that building will change, but that street won't.
Mister Chairman, if I could, um, and and Amanda, perhaps you can elaborate even more. But I'm remembering that we we changed and worked with the architect in the design team to give that that space on Colorado and some open space, I think it's Elk, so that we were achieving the pedestrian experience that we ultimately came up with in the D S P. Both the pedestrian and how they could go in and out of the building and that open space that is truly usable by the the neighborhood, by the public, which would be that residential on Elk. Um, and then as Amanda said, um, the others were were um, undulation um, and and setbacks that would now look out of out of character with the other new buildings. Uh, there's a residential on one side and the hotel on the other that were adhering to the prior D S P. So while I think some of the things above the pedestrian scale um, may not meet the true intent of the current D S P, I I do believe those at the pedestrian level do meet that intent.
I would like to add something if, sorry, um, Chair, um, Commissioner Lee, just one thing I want to mention, just because they're they're, in my opinion, and this is for my other colleagues, it, just because we have buildings currently that don't follow the um, the the downtown specific plan, doesn't mean that we shouldn't start uh following that regulation. At some point, it could be twenty years from now, ten years from now, whatever it is, there will, if there is any changes, we'll eventually have that look. That's why, that's why I mentioned the short, middle, and long, long-term effects of of the specific plan. So we shouldn't just look at it in in a, in a kind of, you know, very narrow vision. We should look at it in a, in an aspect that in the future will be able to have Colorado or or that that area in a specific way. I personally, uh, driving on Colorado, how Americana kind of butts and has that that very long wall, you know, that that's not something that 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 should be on Colorado. And I'm not saying that this specific project is, but I do, I would want to see this project uh, have the downtown specific plan regulations because those regulations were put in place because of some other issues that we have been having throughout development in the downtown area. So that's my two cents. I don't know what my my colleagues and other commissioners have to say, but that's what my um, my thoughts.
Mister Chair?
All right. Chairman Lee?
Yeah, uh, sticking with today's, um, you know, agenda here. Uh, I know that we're saying a lot of things that's a little bit out of the context here. But um, what I want to know is um, the length of this extension that's uh, came into this project, six years extension. Is that set in concrete? Uh, this question might be directed to the staff. Or is is that something that, because of six years seems to be a long time for any, any type of a project, uh, whether or not COVID affected or not, um, you know, that, you know, within even four years, there's a plenty of time to to get your oars in the water and get the the project up and running. Uh, so uh, is that something that is um, that could be modified? Or is that, are we holding on to six years of extension?
Mister Chairman, I I would say that the request for six, that is a request for the six years. Um, but it is an agreement. And so if it is something that the City Council feels is too long, uh, they could say, oh, well, we're only comfortable with this length of time. So the development agreement doesn't require us to be six years. That was the request of the applicant. And and I think she explained earlier, leading up to the Olympics, uh, to be complete at by twenty twenty-eight or twenty twenty-seven.
Mister Chairman, members of the commission, and I I would also add that that statutory development agreement is a negotiated agreement. So this, this is a an application. It's a request.
Mister Fuentes, you have a question?
Um, considering this is a pipeline project and consistent general plan and specific plan, that's exactly my concern was giving it another six years. I was just wondering, recommend the City Council a shorter time period, let's say three years or four years, whatever we all agree upon, is to give them the chance to be able to move on and complete the project. So that's just a recommendation that I would throw into the table.
May I just reply to that? I still don't think, I mean, if the applicant is requesting for three, I mean, six years, giving themselves three or four years doesn't, in my opinion, doesn't resolve what I was, I was trying to, the point I was trying to make. Um, again, from twenty eighteen to two thousand twenty-five or twenty-seven, is it is it seven to nine years past the date, time we have approved or we have done the amendment to the downtown specific plan? My other recommendation would be, I don't know if our economic development department has worked with the applicant. Um, it, I think it's very important that we design our city in a way that's gonna be useful for the future as well. Um, having a, having a hotel that's gonna bring a lot of revenue, especially during during the Olympics, is a great thing to have. It's gonna be great for our city. There's no doubt about it. But we also have to think about the fact that in the future, this, you know, we want to make sure that our city is walkable, our city is friendly to all modes of transportation. Uh, we're gonna have, you know, uh, we're gonna have, we're gonna be able, we need to be able to envision that future. Um, again, I don't know if if this would be something that maybe the project eventually can work with our economic development department and see if they were to work on the, uh, you know, the specific plan regulations, if if there was anything that the economic development department can work with them. But but again, my recommendation, I don't have an issue for them getting an extension. But I would like to see that they do, um, at least when it comes to the design, they comply. And and I keep hearing that there are portions of the design that are already complying with the regulations. But but if it would be possible to maybe look at, look into that further, I I haven't seen the design in detail to to know that. That's, that's again, my my stance on this.
Uh, Mister Chair, if I could give my comments, because they, um, they're pretty similar to Commissioner Shabazian. So I ultimately, I have a hard time finding that this project doesn't comply with the general plan and specific plan. So based on the purview of what we're being asked to do in this meeting, I would be inclined to approve it. But with that being said, I do have several comments on the actual agreement that I would like included in the remarks to City Council. Um, ultimately, I think timing is an issue. And like I mentioned earlier, there's kind of a duality on both sides. In one sense, this thing has been pushed back and COVID has delayed it further. In another sense, the applicant is still not necessarily ready to go full steam ahead if we were to grant this extension, which means that in the meantime, the city is not exactly gonna benefit much. And with that being said, the city is still being asked to lock in twenty eighteen impact fees for a project that ultimately is not gonna benefit the city until much later from now, at least in my opinion, until until the economy recovers, especially for business-specific hotels. Um, and from the looks of it, this project won't even be complete for another four to five years. Um, you know, that doesn't seem that appealing from my standpoint for the city to give all of these special requests. So as under the purview of the Planning Commission, I'm willing to recommend that it does align with the general and specific plan. But I think there are a number of issues that should be addressed within the development agreement. I also agree that six years is quite a long time. Um, this is a hundred thirty-room hotel. It's not a particularly large project. Um, and from that standpoint alone, I think it's a bit bizarre that there is a development agreement, given the size of the project. Now, I understand, given economic circumstance of COVID, you know, there's a lot of things that the city can offer in this case to help the applicant. But I don't think, you know, the city should necessarily do it if it doesn't make sense from their standpoint, which in my opinion, I don't think it does. So like I said, I would be willing to move the approval as well, like Commissioner Shabazian. But I would like those comments included whenever we send this to City Council.
I could support that.
Mister Fuentes? Any questions, any comments?
Um, Commissioner Trachian, does that mean you have a motion?
I'll move.
Uh, I'll second that.
And we get a vote?
Do you want to have, excuse me, Mister Chair, members of the commission, do you want to have staff recount for the commission, the modifications to the motion and the the conditions? Or the, I'm sorry, the recommend recommendations, comments of the Planning Commission? To be assured before you take that vote that it encapsulates everything that you've requested? Okay.
Yes, please. Will we be able to do that today? Or is this something that we might want to be re-meeting to do? I'm not sure. I know at some, sometimes we have brought it back to meetings, um, depending on um, what we are requesting. I I don't know, Kristen?
I, well, if I can summarize and see if that, if that captures it, then, you know, this may answer the question. Um, so um, to to find that the the proposed development agreement is consistent with the general plan and the downtown specific plan. Um, uh, and a a look by City Council over concerns over the the timing. Um, just, I'm just gonna leave that sort of general of the timing of six years, uh, something less. Um, and also, if if there's anything other, any other thing that's really specific that maybe I missed uh from Commissioner Trachian in that?
Well, for mine, for mine, I believe it was just the fact that, you know, our freezing impact fees from twenty eighteen, I would recommend that if anything, it should be from either the start of construction or at the very minimum from currently, because they've already been granted an extension. Um, and I think Commissioner Shabazian had a few more planning-specific comments.
Okay, so.
Commissioner Trachian, yeah, I think, I think, um, Kristen, where you mentioned the downtown specific plan, because you're saying that it's, um, when you read it, you said it aligns with our general plan and downtown specific plan. Well, it technically kind of doesn't with the new one. So I I'm trying to see if you could put something in there that if, because of the extension that the the applicant is requesting, if it would be, uh, if the council can, um, at least required the applicant to follow downtown specific plan, a design guidelines. Um, so along with the fees, also the design guidelines of the downtown specific plan.
Is that, um, the fees I heard from nods from the whole commission, uh, do I have the same nods for, uh, it sounds like basically a redesign to be consistent with the the standards of the new D S P? Do I hear that from?
No, I differ from that. Um, I am in agreement with uh, I am in agreement with, you know, section, Commissioner Trachan. But, you know, as far as we heard from, you know, Mr. Lazemfam and so on, as far as the design criteria, I think, you know, I'm good with that. Except that the timing and then maybe the, the fee structure could be recommended to, to be updated. But, you know, I think I heard enough, another, you know, reasoning for staying on the current, with the current design. And, and I don't really see that really issue with, with, with that being said. You know, I just want to make one mention that what Commissioner Sebastian is saying is really more towards a general study and what needs to be done as a, as a staff to follow up, but not on this project. So I, I want to agree on the Commissioner Trachan, but not any more than that.
May I just stand very quickly? I will not be able to support that. I mean, for me, it's a very, we've been having a lot of issues with designs in downtown. I, I have issues with the way our downtown has been designed. And for me, I can't, I can't see a hotel or a big development go up in downtown as we have had in downtown before without following this new specific plan. The whole reason we had the specific plan amended is because our projects have happened in downtown. And unfortunately, some of the designs were failed, they were failed designs. So we hired a consultant, we went through this entire process, and we amended our downtown specific plan for this specific reason. So, so us giving a project that has submitted application back in 2018 to maybe have a development completed in 2027 or so, but with the old standards, it's kind of us just not following up. I mean, we keep hearing from the residents of Glendale unhappy they've been, not all, but a lot of residents here in England, and that they have been unhappy with the way downtown has been developed. And finally, that we have a way to kind of help that design to, to shape correctly or shape in a way that's going to eventually be the, the way the city wants to see. I think we should take that. The city, as the applicant mentioned, this is, these are buildings that the city, the applicant already owns. And the city should start taking, kind of, you know, taking pride in what we have and, and want the city to look in a specific way. So I don't know, Kristin, I don't know if you can have the comment just from me, but I really want our commissioners to be able to, to kind of, you know, think about that. We are the planning commission, we, you know, and, and we need to think about the long range, how our downtown is going to look like. We need to think about how eventually we're going to be able to hopefully bring in, you know, different modes of transportation, different, you know, different ways to, for folks to be able to be more comfortable walking and living and working downtown. And these are the little steps we need to take to be able to have it in the future. So if, if this was a project that, you know, was, had applied in 2018 and was being developed in 2020, I completely understand, I would have been okay with it. But a nine, almost a decade, nine, nine years, or maybe if they're completed in seven years, is a very long time. It's, it's considered a medium range in, in planning world. So I really ask my fellow commissioners to consider sending that note to our, to our city council and let them decide if they want to, if they want to let the project go without any changes. Okay, that's the city council that's going to make that decision. But at least we have put in our, our planning hats on and we've given our two cents on it.
Mr. Chair, then I think Commissioner Sebastian's support either has to be rescinded or Commissioner Trachan has to reintroduce the motion to get a support.
Do we have any other comments, so we can start?
I think it would be helpful if we hear from Kristin or Gillian. You know, Commissioner Shabazian, I understand where you're coming from and I, and I do agree with you. Ultimately, we want to keep planning at the forefront moving forward and make sure that whatever's constructed is in, you know, the benefit of all residents of Glendale. And it's something that's enjoyed by those same residents. The only issue I'm having here, and personally, I wouldn't have a problem including the comment, I'll, I'll put that on the record. But in terms of the actual motion given to us, whether this development agreement complies with the general plan as well as the specific plan, technically speaking, you know, at least how I understand it, it is grandfathered in like any other project. So if this was granted, ultimately, that's what it's based on. So I do understand your concern, but I, I personally wouldn't be able to say that it does not comply with either of those things as part of our motion.
And I agree with you, and I'm just suggesting putting the language in there to, for the city council to review the possibility of, you know, like taking a look at this project, again, just because of the duration of possibly six years from this point on, giving this, this extension. That, that's all, and, and that's what we are adding, right? We're adding our comments based on our position we have on planning commission.
So, Mr. Chair.
Members of the commission that, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman Lee, I interrupted, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, so, you know, it is, it is clear that the Commissioner Trachan has clarified his motion. And if Commissioner Sebastian has issues supporting that, I'm willing to second the motion.
So I have a, I have a, a motion by Commissioner Trachan and a second by Commissioner Shabazian of what I, I hear is maybe a universal concern to put forward of supporting the finding of consistency, but to take a look at the timing of six years, that that's a little too long. And to also look at where the fees would maybe be taken from. Perhaps from 2018 is, is too long and to have, have the, when the fees would be applicable, have maybe a different start date. That is what I hear as, as sort of the two factors of this. On a, on a side note, I hear Commissioner Shabazian making the request that council consider that this project should apply the new DSP standards.
That's correct. And I know, Kristin, in, in the past, we have had that we didn't have consensus when we're doing these discussions. And I think when we did the motion, and maybe it was a note that it was attached to the motion, that said, so-and-so person also had this comment. So I don't know if that's something we wanted to.
I would just say that whatever motion moves forward and has support, that motion will, will be put forth to the city council. I can say, you know, perhaps a sentence or two could be, could be added to the staff report to just draw attention that this other discussion occurred at the planning commission and, and see if that satisfies the group.
I think if we do have that in the, in the staff report, that, that discussion was there, I'll be okay. I don't know if there, I don't know if we have, well, if we do a roll call, then, then we have a, I don't, I don't know if the other commissioners want to maybe chime in and let us know how they feel about, about the discussion.
I guess I would just, my question is, is Commissioner Shabazian, you seconded this motion with, with those two things about fees and, and timing? You still okay with that?
Actually, I think Commissioner Lee said that he was going to second it, so, because there was that level of conflict. So let's have Commissioner Lee second that. But maybe before we do our roll call, it'll be good to hear from Commissioner Manassion and Commissioner Fuentes, just so, so we know what their position is.
I think the project, since it's already a hotel there, it will benefit the city. We're going to have a newer building, more rooms. But my problem is, if we have a problem with the, the fees. Amanda mentioned something that because of this COVID-19, everything has gone up. The cost of construction gone up, all the materials gone up. So by the time if this project gets to the point that they want to start the construction and all the materials are gone up prices, we have to justify the, something that, you know, that they, they are willing to do. Because if the price has gone up, if our city fees are also going up, so they're probably going to walk out of it, and they said, no, it's not beneficial for us to build this. So that's also something that I'm considering. But as far as the changes of the, the new DSP, I'm all for with Commissioner Shabazian. We need to keep it the way that the city is moving forward with the new designs and the new buildings also needs to match it. But other than that, yeah, I support the building, I support the project.
Okay, as I mentioned earlier, it is a pipeline project and aim to be consistent with the general plan and specific plan. I agree with Commissioner Stevens' motion and recommendations. And like I said, my, my only thing was the length of the extension. If, that I think you already mentioned, will be mentioned in recommendation to the city council. As far as meeting the latest downtown specific plan changes, I, it will be really hard for a pipeline project to get into that. But it's really up to the city council if they would like to change or amend some of the agreements or specifications, but I will support the motion. Thank you.
Kristin, I guess with that, I am going to try to do a motion and then capture a few things. So the motion will include the, what you currently have, which would be the general plan and what Commissioner Trachan had mentioned regarding the fees. And then also possibly looking over the project having to meet the downtown specific plan regulations. And then, and last thing was to, possibly for the city council to consider a shorter period of time for the extension. I think those are the three items I heard.
Mr. Chair? For the interest of, yeah, proceeding with the, this meeting here, what you have is you have a motion and you have a second. So if motion fails, then you can consider or entertain the other option. But right now, you do have in your hand, motion and a support second. So I think you owe a roll call on this motion.
Commissioner Lee, I actually disagree because I misunderstood the motion, so I seconded it without understanding. So we, and our discussion was.
I seconded it though.
That's correct, but, but that's correct, but there, there was a disagreement before that. So we, I seconded it without realizing.
Can we take a roll, please?
Then maybe we should clearly, kind of, so that, so the motion, so if I may.
If I may, I, I have a, moved by Commissioner Trachan, seconded by Lee, to make the finding of consistency for the development agreement and include the, the two general comments, which is the length of the, the length of the development agreement as well as evaluating fees. That is the motion on the floor.
Okay, can we get a?
So that's what we're going to vote on, this, this motion.
Can we get a roll call?
Yes, Commissioner Trachan?
Yes.
Commissioner Fuentes?
Yes.
Commissioner Lee?
I.
Commissioner Shabazian?
No.
Chairperson Manassion?
Yes.
Okay, with that for one, the motion passes.
Okay. Do we have any comments, any questions?
Gillian, I'm not sure if this, this was, this was the correct way to go, but, but I don't know if you have anything to add to this. Because we, we just, right before voting, four of the commissioners agreed with three items. So it's, it's a bit frustrating that we are voting on something that we just agreed on.
The motion, Chairman Manassion, members of the planning commission. So we've been in discussion, there was a motion and a second that was initially on the first two items, that was just clarified by Kristin Asp. And that was brought, vote was requested on that particular motion. There was an amendment to that motion, could have been offered, but was not entertained by the other planning commissioners to add the third. So there was definitely discussion of the third and there was a commitment by, on behalf of Kristin to include the discussion, the nature of the discussion within the staff report to the city council. So it is not that that comment will not be reflected in what is conveyed to the city council as, as a concern that was discussed at some length, but it was not added in the motion as a specific comment. So I, I think that the process was, was fine the way that it, it was appropriate, was legal the way that it was undertaken. It's, had you gained traction for a amended motion, that could have happened. But the question was called and that was to act on the motion that was on the floor. So that had to either go up or down, or you would have needed agreement from the maker of the motion to amend it.
And that is too late to do now?
Motion has passed. It would be, have to, before, it would have to, the maker of the motion would need to, you'd need to get an agreement from the maker of the motion to reconsider the motion.
And may I do that?
Consideration by the maker of the motion.
I'm going to ask, just, just for my own sanity, I'm going to ask Commissioner Trachan if he would like to amend the motion. And if that's a note, then, then we can move on.
Commissioner Shabazian, I think at this point in time, as long as your comments are appropriately included in the staff report, I don't think there's a need necessarily to amend the motion because at the end of the day, it's going to come down to the city council deciding for themselves based on our comments and they're going to see all of the comments in there regardless.
Thank you, Chairperson.
Actually, if I could just correct that, just not necessarily have to be the maker of the motion who was in favor of the motion, could be anyone who voted on the prevailing side of the motion can be at, move to reconsider the motion.
So it could be any person, again, I, my, my only.
So that would be anyone other than you.
Yes.
Voted for it.
So I don't know, again, my, my only worry here is we keep hearing from the residents of Glendale about design. And I don't understand why we have a pushback about it. And we just had a discussion and kind of four of us agree. And I understand, I understand why we are kind of, I, I understand why we are having this discussion. But I think as a planning commission, we kind of should, should show what the planning commission stands for. And yes, the city council can make the, can make the final call. I think it is important for the planning commission, that, I'm sorry, for the city council to see what the planning commission, besides the fees, which are very important, but the, the, one of the, you know, one of the things we do in planning commission is, is actually look at how our city will grow in the future. So if there are any, any, any person besides me who is interested to, to re-amend this, for us to vote for that third item, I would appreciate it. And again, if, if not, we'll send it to commission, to city council. It's just the only thing, it would be that I was the only person who mentioned it. It'll be great if we have a more unanimous voice bringing something like this up. And again, just looking in the long term of how our city will be developed in the future. So if there is anyone, I would appreciate it, and if not, we, we can move on. And I assure you, you have to drop off pretty quickly, so. Is, is there a person who would like to do a second motion to add that?
That would be a motion, specifically a motion for reconsideration. And when they have been made by someone who was on the prevailing side. So that would be anyone other than Commissioner Shabazian. It doesn't appear you have any takers.
That's okay, thank you.
So Kristin, anything else to be adjourned?
There are, I'll just note that there are no community development updates at this time. And with that, we can entertain an adjournment.
Thank you very much, meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, bye.
Make it as a motion to adjourn and.
Move, I'm going.
So moved.
Thank you, bye.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Take care. Take care.